I will call to meeting order. First of all, I'd like to welcome all the new commissioners to the commission this evening. And then we'll have the invocation by Commissioner on up.
I'll have spray. To Lord, we thank you for this day and we thank you for the city that we have the opportunity to serve. We pray that you would be with us tonight as we make decisions and that you would be glorified in all we do here. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Commissioner Mashaw?
Mashaw.
Mashaw. Sorry. Present. Take your roll call. Sorry, I didn't tell you guys. Commissioner Thorne?
Here.
Commissioner Art?
Here.
Commissioner Max?
Here.
Commissioner Jordan?
Here.
Commissioner Hawkins?
Here.
Commissioner Skeen?
Here.
Commissioner Newsom?
Here.
Has everybody had an opportunity to review the minutes? And if so, is there a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Commissioner Thorne?
Aye.
Commissioner Newsom?
Aye.
Commissioner Jordan?
Upstain.
Commissioner Art?
Aye.
Commissioner Max?
Aye.
Commissioner Mashaw?
Upstain.
Commissioner Skeen?
Aye.
All right, item number one is PL 1907, 1786 Cotton Drive, request for a conditional use to allow an accessory dwelling unit. The subject property is located on the north side of Cotton Drive at 1786 Cotton Drive. Todd Steele representing the owner. Mr. Kadoshi, please present the planning staff report and comments.
Yes, sir. Todd Steele tonight, the architect for the project, is representing the owner for a request for a conditional use to allow an accessory dwelling unit at 1786 Cotton Drive. A little background on how accessory dwelling units got before us tonight. In June of 2022, the Board of Aldermen adopted an ordinance that allows an accessory dwelling unit, provided the following stipulations are met, that all required setbacks for the principal dwelling of the property are met with an accessory dwelling unit. All properties vested in the single ownership in the exterior appearance of the accessory dwelling unit is compatible with the character of the residences in the neighborhood or the immediate surrounding area. The property is in the existing weathering subdivision. It's Zoned R30. For the record, I will read the approval or denial criteria for a conditional use, just so we can structure our motion in that way. Explain how the proposed use will not substantially increase traffic hazards or congestion, how the proposed use will not substantially increase fire hazards, how the proposed use will not adversely affect the character of the neighborhood, how the proposed use will not adversely affect the general welfare of the city, how the proposed use will not overtax public utilities or community facilities, and how the proposed use of the property will conform the recommendations of the general development plan. As with all conditional uses, I do recommend a time limit if considered for approval tonight and that another condition be that all necessary building permits that would be required be pulled. We did notice, send public notice to all property owners within 500 feet. We did not receive any calls from those notices. In your staff report, I did propose motions to approve, to deny, and to table, just to give you guys some guidance on that motion. A little bit about the site plan, the existing residence is located in the center of the lot. The proposal would be to add one garage door at the front and then the accessory dwelling unit to the rear to adjoin to the existing pool house. And so the home would be situated around the pool at the rear of the lot. The proposed building materials are to be the same as the existing residence and the roof pitches are proposed to be the same as well to help meet the condition of meeting the exterior appearance being similar in nature to the principal structure. I did include the full building plans to give you an idea of the architecture. So you can see the building pitches, roof materials and brick is proposed to be the same. And in the site plan, you can see no additional driveways proposed. They're just adding the one garage door for the one proposed resident to park in. The full building plans are in your staff report. Anything would have to meet the building and fire code. Most notably, this could trigger a sprinkler system, which the applicant is aware of because of the size of the home with the fire code. And so that's something that's currently in discussion for conformance. There are site maps, just to give you an idea of the other surrounding residences in the area and the rear of your staff report, as well as a vicinity map to give you an idea of where this is located generally in Hernando. It's barely in the city limits off of Scott Road. The rear of the property is actually in the county. That concludes my staff report. I'm available if you've got any questions.
Any question for Mr. Kadoshi? All right, would the applicant please come forward and state your name and address in its entirety?
Todd Steele, 2229 Northview Street here in Hernando. So I'm a designer for the project and just I think it's pretty straightforward. ADU for a mother-in-law suite. And I'm just open for questions if you have any.
Any questions for that?
I guess my only question would be, you said they would be parking in the garage so that wouldn't shift any parking to the street. I see there's a fairly large driveway, but I was just curious.
It is. There's two car garages there now and we're adding on a third, a third bay to that garage, to the front. And it's not crossing the setback lines or anything.
Just to share with everybody, Patrick and Susan Collins are my neighbors and I was able to walk over there this morning and take a walk around the lot and look and compare. And from the street, only the side start of the building, the ADU, can be visible from the street once it's in place, just because of the angle of the house. And then it's going to kick out to a third garage, which is well within the 30-foot, 40-foot easement from the front. So yeah, it, everything fits, everything fits nice in there. The only thing, and then we talked this morning about the conditional sprinkler system. I don't know if that has anything to do with the conditional use as part of the development.
This is more a square footage requirement, going over a certain square footage.
Is it over 4,000 square?
Five.
Five. I thought, okay, I had a total heated space 4,400 is what I saw.
It's total square footage, including unheated.
Including, okay, unheated, okay. I follow.
It's an unfortunate rule.
Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you. Anyone support against this item, please come forward and state your name and address in its entirety. All right, is there a motion to approve, deny, table this item?
I still have one question.
Okay, sure.
Because it's a conditional use and it's going to be a permanent structure, seems like a contradiction.
It's tough. I mean, we have several of these types of conditional uses. I know gas pumps and C2 are conditional use. Actually cemetery is a conditional use in the A-zone. So we did it, I think, almost expecting a long timeline. And it's also tied to Patrick Collins, the owner of the property. So if it changes, it would need to be, if it's going to be lived in by a different resident, it would need to be updated by the new owners. So there's a couple of catches.
So on the conditional use, we can say indefinite as long as the current owner stays at the residence and conditional use expires if he sells the property?
I think we asked for 30 years of application.
Thirty?
And honestly, that's, the time limit's a little easier for us to catch because we're not keeping up deed transfers and things like that. So the long, it would be easier on us if it was a time limit of a defined period.
You can't say in perpetuity?
You can. I mean, the new owner would have to catch it title search somehow.
If that's more complicated, let's not do it. I just don't want to cause them issues later on when they're trying to sell a home where their kids are a state or something are.
I mean, 50 years from now, that's Patrick, but you know, there'll be a new owner in that property. So if we put 30 years on it, and if Patrick's still there at 30 years, then he would come back to renew the condition.
Just renew it, yeah.
Yeah, that's right.
Whatever's easier.
The time limit would be easier, just on us to have a defined set time.
And Todd, you said you requested 30?
But if they sell it, the 30 years is null and void, right?
That's right. They'd have to come in sooner than that.
Oh, that's a great question. So let's say you sell it five years from now. Because it was under a conditional use, would the new owners have to apply for another conditional use from that permanent structure?
If they wanted to use it as an accessory dwelling unit.
As an accessory.
They could either take the kitchen out and kind of convert it just to more bedrooms to make it a really large house. And that, just to be fair, that's kind of the gray area we have with ADUs is there's a fine line of just doing an addition versus an independent living unit. And the independent kitchen, living area and bathroom separated from the homes, kind of what triggers it. So there's a way they could come into conformance and not even need the conditional use after too. It's just hard to tell.
All right, so I'd better want to make a motion.
I'll make a motion. I move to grant conditional use approval to Patrick Collins for an accessory dwelling unit, north side of Cotton Drive, east of Christina Drive, more specifically 1786 Cotton Drive and Section 14 Township 7, Range 8, and based upon conditions 1 through 6 in the staff report.
I'll second that.
And a 30-year timeline.
I'll second that.
Aye.
Commissioner Newsom?
Aye.
Commissioner Jordan?
Aye.
Commissioner Art?
Aye.
Commissioner Max?
Aye.
Commissioner Mashaw?
Aye.
Commissioner Skeen?
Aye.
Motion to approve this item passes. Next item is a variance, PL 1909, 818 Andy's Way. A request for a variance to allow exposed cross members on the exterior of a fence of the area being fenced. The subject property is located on the north side of Andy's Way, west of Benton Drive, more specifically 818 Andy's Way in Section 25 Township 2, Range 8. James Garnett, the owner. Mr. Kadoshi, please provide the planning, staff report and comment.
Yes, sir. PL 1909, as you mentioned, is a request for a fence variance to allow the exposed cross members in the outside area to be in fence. So generally, the rule of thumb is the smooth side is out when you build a fence. Mr. Garrett's here tonight requesting for the, the rear portion of his fence to flip that around with the smooth portions on the inside. For the next two applications, I'll read this once for the record, but the legal approval or denial criteria for a variance should be based on the following. Special conditions and circumstances exist or peculiar to the land, structures, buildings involved and are not generally applicable to other land, structures or buildings in the same district. The literal enforcement of the provisions of these standards would deprive the applicant of rights commonly enjoyed by properties within the same district under the terms of this ordinance. That special conditions and circumstances do not result from actions of the applicant or not based upon economic considerations. And granting this variance request, it would not confer on the applicant any special privilege as otherwise denied by this ordinance to other lands, structures or buildings in the same district. I did include some pictures in your staff report to give you an idea of what the fence looks like. So the fence is located on the north side of Andy's Way and each home on either side of this fence were built first. So the fences, smooth side were out, correct. And so that created the smooth side on this gentleman's lot. So his general, what he's asking for is just to make it the same all the way around. So smooth side, smooth side, and the rear side, smooth. In most neighborhoods, there could be a section behind him. And theoretically, if that fence was built first, the smooth side would be out. And so we talk about this in the department sometimes, someone's always, someone always has to be wrong when you're going down the street of smooth side or fence side. But when you pull a fence permit, that's the rule of thumb, it's got to be smooth side out. So the fence is constructed, as you can see in your staff report, the rear, the north boundary line is the fence in question that he's asking for the variance upon. The property behind it has no plans to be developed. We don't know of any immediate plans at all. But if and when it did develop, we don't know what would be on that backside. It would be a street or another lot. It's impossible to say at this point. The applicant did provide responses to each of the discussion criteria in the staff report, and those are included there. And I did, again, provide proposed motions to approve, deny, or table however you see fit in the staff report. And I'm available if you've got any questions.
Any question, Mr. Kadoshi?
Has anyone spoken to whoever owns the property behind?
No, we sent the notice, didn't receive a call. And this did get an HOA approval for this fence.
Okay.
And Mr. Garrett's here as well.
You own the fence? You, he owns the fence? Okay, okay. Oh, you mean the property behind? I'm sorry.
Yeah, I was just wondering if someone had spoken to whoever owns the land behind it. But if they sent a notice, then I'm sure they're aware of it and don't have a problem with it.
Any other question, Mr. Kadoshi? Would the applicant please come forward and state your name and address in its entirety?
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is James Garrett. I'm the resident of 818 Andy's Way. Like he said, I thought it was aesthetically pleasing that my neighbors already had pre-existing fences. So I just put the pickets inward, outward, I mean inward to be pleasing to my, my liking. Do we anyone have any questions? I did get approved by the HOA and they said it was fine. So it's forwarded to a wooded area and a drainage easement. So I don't, like he said, I don't think it'll be future development in the area. I think it's private property behind it actually, and no one can see it from the community. But if you have any questions, I'm here.
Yes, what's tough with the variance? Because it stays with the property forever. So 10 years from now, that property is developed and the fence is back there. Then it's not going to be cohesive.
He built his fence first. He got there first.
Yeah. And in driving by today, it does look cohesive.
Oh, yeah, yeah. It's a nice, very nice looking fence.
Any other questions for that?
No, just more of a comment that they're asking for a variance after the fence has already been built. So, and I'm guessing you didn't know.
I did.
But, and I don't know if that's something we need to revisit at a later date, getting fence permits and.
Happens more and more than.
Oh, we get it a lot.
I don't think he's the first person to build a fence without a permit.
Won't be the last.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Have a good day.
Anyone support against this item? Is there a motion to approve, deny, table this item?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the fence variance for Mr. Garrett to allow the exposed members on the exterior area being fenced. The subject property to be located north side of Andy's Way, west of Benton Drive, more specifically 818 Andy's Way in Section 25 Township 2, Range 8. Mr. Garrett, it looks like a nice fence.
You have a sec?
Second.
Commissioner Thorne?
Aye.
Commissioner Newsom?
Aye.
Commissioner Jordan?
Aye.
Commissioner Art?
Aye.
Commissioner Max?
Aye.
Commissioner Mashaw?
Aye.
Commissioner Skeen?
Aye.
Motion to approve this item passes. The next item is PL 1912, 2407 Scott Meadows. A request for a variance for the allowable front setback for a fence. The subject property is located west side of Scott Meadow Lane, southwest Commerce Street, more specifically 2407 Scott Meadow Lane in Section 14 Township 3, Range 7. Willz Davis representing the owner. Mr. Kadoshi, present the staff comments and report.
Yes, sir. This is PL 1912, a request for a fence variance to approach the required setback at 2407 Scott Meadows Lane. Willz Davis tonight representing the owner. This discussion portion of the staff report is the same as the previous. The applicant did provide responses to each of the legal criteria for approval or denial. A little bit about the variance particularly, we've seen several of these in the past. What we allow by code is for a 10-foot encroachment off the house. So this home faces Scott Meadows Lane. He could come off 10 feet and go straight back and be legal. He's requested 40 to match the building line on the corner. And the reason the 10-foot is set at 10-foot is we'd like to make sure there's not going to be a sightline issue coming around the corner or that creates an issue for the neighbor. We did a site visit. We don't feel there's a sightline issue because this does stay within the building setback, but it does encroach past the 10 and does need a variance. If approved, we do request a fence permit be pulled. And as you can see, it's a bit of an irregular shaped lot of how the, the house is situated facing Scott Meadows Lane. And so that's the biggest reason for the variance according to the applicant. I did provide a site map showing where this lot is and where it's going to face with future development. The lots you see in green on the web map are currently plotted. The stuff in yellow is soon to come. And so that's the future development phase is giving you an idea where this fence will be in the future. Again, Willz is here if you've got any questions, and I'm available as well.
So I guess if this is approved, the yellow lots behind will also be coming and asking for a variance on their fence?
The corner lot, most, I would assume. The, the odd thing about this one is this corner lot will adjoin a typical lot. So I'm assuming this fence will tie into the side of the future home.
Okay.
And the lot on the other side of that, it's a bit smaller, so I don't know if they'll need the variance or not. But anything over 10, we'll, we'll need it.
Yeah, I'm lost on what the variance is. I mean, it looks, it looks like a normal fence line.
It does. So it's the shape of the lot, you know.
There.
The home faces Scott Meadows Lane and the orientation of the home created a large quote-unquote backyard, but this is a street right-of-way. This is a future street. And so our ordinance allows you to come off 10-foot on a typical corner lot and go straight back. The shape of the lot and where the house sits kind of created a unique issue where he wants to come off 40 and go straight back to match his building line. And so if you look.
How many feet is it from the blue line back to the street?
I'll measure it for you real quick. It's, here's where the house is on the area. It'll give you a little bit better of an idea. So he wants to come off 40 feet and come back that way to match the building line rather than the allowed 10. So the fence, maybe in there.
Okay, so the allowance off the house is 10.
Your mind is getting worse than I thought.
You can go 10 legally. He's asking you to go 40.
Is there a sidewalk?
There will be.
How close will it be to the sidewalk?
It'll be, the sidewalk will, I think that's actually an open ditch section, isn't it? That's open ditch, there's no sidewalks.
That's why I was curious. You don't want to be right on top of a sidewalk?
I think the sidewalk's going to run in the front, right?
This is the open ditch section of that subdivision, so there's no sidewalks on that.
My only question would be the setback of the lot that's going to be behind it. What's that going to look like? That house is going to have to have a variance or it's going to look weird.
Although it's, it's going to be facing the street, so.
Yeah, the future lot, you can see these homes sit pretty close to the road. So I assume that home is going to be in here. So this fence will join their side fence in the future.
That'll, you think that'll line up kind of based on?
I do. Because the way this lot is, I assume they're going to build the house just to give these folks a backyard. And the side of that home would join kind of the side of this fence.
But it would go all the way to the front of that?
It's, so the, what they're proposing is to stay within the building line. And so this building line, this.
So that line is going to be like where the house behind is going to be?
That's right. That could be the front of the house next door to it. Because this is a front yard setback of that, that building line. You can see.
Like 50 feet or something? Front setback?
I can pull it real quick, but you can see like the front of that home on that line, the building line, here in the section of Scott Meadows, they're building everything to the front to get the biggest backyard. This home building line is the same. So this lot, their house will be, you know, the further home will be there. So there may be a bit of an encroachment to the front, but it'd be on the building line. The home has to be 40 foot back from the front driveway line.
Any other question, Mr. Kadoshi? The applicant, please come forward and state your name and address in its entirety.
My name is Willz Davis. I live at 5745 Chalk Towne Drive in Horn Lake. Thanks.
Any questions for that?
Are you the guy building the fence?
I work for the builder that built the home. I'll be hiring somebody to build the fence.
Oh, okay. So I'm curious why there's no, I'm looking at the numbers here, 429 linear feet of fence line. But the, I guess that would be the south edge of the lot. There's no fence planned for that side of the lot?
That side of the lot will pretty much just going to come to that back corner. I think he's asking, is there already a fence here? Oh, no, sir.
Yeah, that left edge.
No, sir, there's not currently a fence there. That, that should be highlighted as part of the fence.
That would be part of an.
Yes, sir.
Now, how does that work then? Because if that goes up against the property line, is it because it's not on a street side, it's on a property line, so the fence can run?
Yeah, there's, if it's just a butting a neighbor, you can put it on the property line.
The corner lots are just, it's tricky.
So then the next door neighbor gets the nice edge.
That's the confusion.
I was going to say which side is going to be out.
So this fence will be smooth side out, but what that's created is technically this will be smooth side on their neighbor. And it exists all over, but it's just a general rule of thumb to keep the runners visible from the public right-of-way is, is the, is the point of it.
Yeah, that's my backyard. No, no, no sides are the same.
So from the blue line to the street, you're saying it's 40 feet?
Yes. Actually, probably more because the right-of-way line is going to be, from the actual pavement, it'll be more than 40 feet. Yeah, I think the, it's about 10 or 15 feet from the pavement to the property line.
I didn't have a chance to go. You said you went up coming around that traffic circle.
It's coming in the traffic circle, which helps a lot. And the shape of the lot is a bit odd. So as you approach here, this is all wide open. So it's pretty open. so it's pretty open.
Any other questions for that? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to approve, deny, or table this item?
I'll make a motion to approve a fence variance to encroach into the required setback based on the items listed below. The fence is described in the attached exhibits. Subject property located on the west side of Scott Meadows Lane, south of West Commerce Street, more specifically, 2407 Scott Meadows Lane, and Section 14 Township 3, Range 7, A, B, C, and D.
Yeah, sec?
Second.
Commissioner Thorne?
Aye.
Commissioner Newsom?
Aye.
Commissioner Jordan?
Aye.
Commissioner Art?
Aye.
Commissioner Max?
Aye.
Commissioner Mashaw?
Aye.
Commissioner Skeen?
Aye.
Motion to approve this item passes. All right, the final item on the agenda is a national officer.
Yes, sir. Right now, as you know, we have Commissioner Hawkins as our chairman, our vice chair is Commissioner Jordan, and our secretary is Commissioner Thorne. And so, the July meeting is when it's up for reappointment, or we just need to reaffirm our officers. If you want to make a change, kind of now's the time. So the floor is open. I guess if you want to make a nomination for a new chairman or the same one, it's up to you all.
That's up to Keith, if he wants to keep doing it.
No, I don't mind.
I think he does a great job.
I like him, no problem.
I make a motion for Mr. Keith to be the chairman.
All right. And then the vice chair and the secretary as well. Let's do them all three at the same time.
I've done so many meetings as I did, I think. You covered as many meetings as I have as chairman when Keith wasn't available. I don't care.
Vice chair and a vice sub-chair?
Assistant to the vice chair.
He makes a good assistant.
Vice co-chair?
I mean, we can leave it the same. I mean, if it ain't broke, don't fix it.
I don't care.
I'm Nate Jordan, just keep vice president or vice chair.
So I guess we just need a motion to keep them the same, if that's the easiest thing?
Yeah. I'll make a motion that we keep the current positions the same.
Commissioner Thorne?
Aye.
Commissioner Newsom?
Aye.
Commissioner Jordan?
Aye.
Commissioner Art?
Aye.
Commissioner Max?
Aye.
Commissioner Mashaw?
Aye.
Commissioner Skeen?
Aye.
No, just want to publicly welcome the new commissioners. Glad to have you on the team. That's all I got.
Welcome, welcome. Motion adjourned. Motion adjourned.
Second.
That's, that's a record.
That was a good, easy first meeting.
Yeah.